All right, good. Well, Clark, can you call the rules? Yes, that. Mike Wagner?
Here.
James Hartman?
Here.
Mary Beth Shaw?
Here.
Cindy Bythe?
Here.
Isaiah Crow?
Here.
Gary D'Amico?
Here.
Great. I do have proof of hosting. Please join me for the question.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Hold on.
Where did you get? James? Perfect. All right, well, that brings us right up to the referendum presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sims, and he'll be giving and offering the needed information. I would like you to vote. Oh, yes. Oh, yes. We approved the agenda, but we didn't actually approve it. Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I'll say yes. Isaiah?
Yes.
And Gary?
Yes.
Perfect. Now we can move on. I'm so excited about the referendum.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Just want to welcome everybody. Thank you for being here. Before we jump into kind of some of the details of it, just as we worked to put this together and as I shared it with the admin team and the board, it was really just two pretty clear objectives. Number one, we wanted to provide the information in as clear of a way as possible. And just try to provide the information for those of you that are interested and obviously for the community as a whole. So hopefully clarity and then just the information in general is something that you find beneficial and helpful tonight. As we go through it, there will be some slides that are quite easy to understand and others that perhaps you have questions on, so certainly will not hurt my feelings if you ask questions as we're moving through. And if we don't have the answer immediately, we will definitely get back to you with that answer. So a few basics. I would say our community at this point is probably relatively accustomed to the notion of a referendum, but really, in the most simple terms, it's an election in which voters can choose whether or not they want to spend money. And there's two pieces. It's either operations, which is what we're talking about in this case, or facilities, which would typically be a bond referendum to remodel significant portions of your facilities or potentially build something new. So in this case, yes, we are going to a vote or an election for an operational referendum in April. Why needed? Really, the mandated state revenue limits, which date all the way back to 1993. I was at a presentation at CISA a week ago, and the Janesville School District Superintendent had talked about the fact that their school district was a low-spending district back in 93. And because of that, when those revenue limits were put in, in the years since 1993, the Janesville School District estimates they've lost $118 million in state aid because of the revenue limits that were put in in 1993. So that's just one example. Obviously, our example would not be on that same scale because we are much smaller than Janesville. But really, the revenue limits that were put into place and then the state aids, property taxes, things like that. Our experience, and has been for a while, is that the amount of money that we are able to bring in as revenue is not keeping up with expenses, and that is why the referendum is needed for operations. So a little context, and I think this is important to understand or to at least appreciate. So when I say it's a statewide issue, in 2018 alone, six key referendums were passed in the state of Wisconsin for operations. Eight of them did not pass, but 76 were taken. And then if you go back to the last two years, so in 2017 and 2018, there was 118 that were approved and 26 that were not. So for context relative to the state of Wisconsin, there are 421 districts in the state of Wisconsin. So in the year 2018 alone, we had 18% of the school districts in the state went for an operational referendum. And if you look at 2017 and 2018 combined, it's 34% of the school districts in the state of Wisconsin have gone for an operational referendum in the last two years. So over a third of the districts in the state, this has been their reality the last two years. Area. I decided, I didn't put it in there initially, but as I looked at this area, is CISA II. So school districts are a member of a CISA group, which is a cooperative agency, helps with services. They're divided into regions in the state. But in the CISA II region, 20 school districts approved operational referendums in 2018. And interestingly enough, that was out of 21 districts that tried to. So the bottom line is, in our CISA in this region of the state, communities have supported operational referendums at an extremely high rate, a 95% pass rate. That's very high. This April, in our CISA, there are six districts, which obviously includes Wisconsin Heights. There are six districts that are going for an operational referendum in April. And then I just listed a few of the neighboring school districts. Some are similar size, the New Glarises of the world, Evansvilles, and obviously others are much different, but neighboring districts, regional districts nonetheless. So part of the conversation with this operational referendum in comparison to the ones that were done in the past, which we'll certainly get into more detail a little bit later, but I just wanted to provide once again context for what other school districts are doing so you have that knowledge and that information. So if you look at the referendums that were non-reoccurring, so there's two different types. It's a non-reoccurring, which is what we are going for, and there's a reoccurring referendum, which if districts pass a reoccurring referendum, then their district has now added that additional money basically forever. They get that additional revenue each year if it's a reoccurring referendum. But in the case of the non-reoccurring referendums in our CISA, if you look at the number of years that schools have gone for in the last two years, there was one district that went for a one-year, and that was because they wanted to purchase land to build a new school. There was one district in CISA II that went for two years. That was Wisconsin Heights in 2017. And then if you look at three, four, and five years, it's five, four, and four. So the length of the referendum, if we were to say what is more typical, a more typical range is in that three- to five-year range if you're going for a non-reoccurring referendum. And then another one of the questions that has come up a few times is the dollar amount, and having the dollar amount be the same in year one as it is at year five. And once again, I just wanted to provide kind of some global context for that. Three of the four schools that went for a five-year operational referendum went for the same dollar amount each year as well, which is what we have on the April ballot. The other piece I just wanted to share, though, if you go back and you remember the slide before, where we talked about the number of operational referendums that were approved in CISA II, the total number, there's actually been 10 schools in CISA II the last two years that have passed the reoccurring referendum. So I had mentioned before, the reoccurring is you approve it, and then that amount just goes on forever. So the bottom line is, our region, our CISA II, has been very supportive. And the range of years, or in some cases, reoccurring referendums, there's a lot of different models, but really, the bottom line is that, yes, with the exception of one school district, all of them passed within the last year in CISA II. So I figured this would be better earlier than later, because if there's one thing that I have had comments and questions, and rightfully so, but to try to paraphrase the comment that I've heard is, you got your governor, now schools are going to get all of this money, and we don't know that you're going to need this. So I just want to kind of try to paint the picture, and no one knows, because we can't predict the future, but I'm lucky enough to be able to attend legislative meetings on, oh, it's once a month in Fort Atkinson, and those meetings are well represented between Republicans and Democrats, and this is what we're hearing. So first off, yes, we do have, the governor is the former state superintendent, Tony Evers. However, the legislative branch, both the Assembly and Senate are still controlled by Republicans, meaning that when joint finance puts together a budget, that budget's being constructed by the Republicans. So Governor Evers had given his budget address a few weeks ago. The message that came out of that from the Republicans that were at our last meeting was, they will be starting their budget from the base. They will not be starting their budget from what Governor Evers proposed. Base meaning the present budget. So I think that's important to remember. But then the other piece is, what are we hearing? Republicans, Democrats, both sides of the aisle, what are we hearing? What am I hearing from people at these meetings? What am I hearing at the state level? It's funding similar to what the last two years have been, because if you pay attention to school economics a lot, the last two years, there was actually money allocated towards school districts in the per pupil format, but that number for Wisconsin Heights is approximately $150,000. So I just put it out there that the news that we have right now is pointing to somewhere in that ballpark, and it's an estimate, it's speculation, I understand that, around $150,000. The other piece is, though, the next two years, irregardless, it's going to be divided government. It's going to be a Democratic governor, and the legislative branch is going to be controlled by Republicans. So the notion that Dr. Evers or Governor Evers is just going to be able to advance this radical new formula for state funding for public schools just isn't going to happen. The other piece is, if you look at his budget proposal, the new money for schools alone in the next two years, the viennium, would be over $1 billion. The state budget in the next two years barely has $1 billion of new money for everything: roads, healthcare, other government programs. So I don't share that to be a doomsday prognosticator, but I share that for a little bit of reality, is that as much as we want to believe that having a Democratic governor who was the former state superintendent is going to provide this vast influx of money, the money's just not there. And he's not in control of the budget. He can veto, yes, but he can't be the author and the executor on everything in that budget. And then the bottom line there, even with increases at the state level, our district is going to need operational dollars. Even if hypothetically, everything happened that was in Governor Evers' budget, everything happened in his budget towards the favor of public education, and that was all applied to the Wisconsin Heights School District, it would still not make up a $2.2 million deficit in our budget. We would still be looking at millions of dollars of need, even if everything happened. And to think about the fact that if we got all of that funding, say, to the tune of $1 million even annually, I mentioned before, there's 421 districts in the state, we're in the small category of those districts, and there's just over $1 billion in new money. That math doesn't work if Wisconsin Heights is getting over $1 million of new money, because it just can't get spread across the state. So we're hopeful. Do I believe there will be money invested into public education? Yes, I do. Even Republicans believe that to be true. But is there any indication that the money that is going to be invested into public education is going to come close to closing the deficit to where we're at? There just isn't. And, you know, we didn't find ourselves in this situation overnight, and we're not going to find ourselves getting out of the situation overnight either. It's definitely going to take time, irregardless of there's changes made at the state level. So just a few general notes here, and I'm not going to insult anyone's reading ability by reading the list for you, but these are just kind of some general things that contribute to the fact that over one-third of the school districts in the state of Wisconsin have sought operational referendums in the last two years. It's things like this. It's programs like this. It's trying to improve school security. It's trying to have technology. It's paying salaries and benefits for your staff members. It's things like that that are contributing to the need at the state level. Locally, I mentioned the equalization aids before, so that's the money that the state puts into the equalization aid formula, and then school districts get an allocation based on their local ability to raise money versus the state. State revenue limits, I don't want to bring up what was a very political topic, but Act 10 in February of 2011. With Act 10, as districts were given much more flexibility with negotiations and contracts and things like that, the other piece that districts were given was a significant decrease in their revenue limit. Since that time, so go back now eight years, those revenue limits have not rebounded back to where they were in 2011. So to look at school districts from a financial standpoint, it's not hard to wonder why a lot of districts are seeking operational dollars when we're operating, in some cases, with aids that haven't caught up to where they were in 2011. Per pupil categorical aids, the last two years, I mentioned that there was money put into public education at the state level. That's actually where the aids went, so they didn't go through the equalization aid formula. They went to per pupil categorical aid, which lives outside of the equalization aid formula. And from that perspective, we don't know yet. It'll be interesting to see what happens, but the governor, when he was the superintendent, he was a big supporter of the equalization aid formula, because that was put in place to help districts that don't have a good tax base try to be competitive or try to have the resources, I should say, of other districts. Whereas the per pupil categorical aid, $200 for Wisconsin Heights is the same $200 per pupil that Madison gets, that Wannakee gets, that Middleton gets. That doesn't run through the equalization aid formula. Full disclosure, for our district, selfishly, it's actually better that the money goes through the per pupil formula than equalization aid, because our district is considered property-rich, which may seem surprising to some of you, but we are deemed a property-rich school district. We have negative aid from the state, so when money runs through that equalization aid formula, we actually get less than other districts that don't have such high property values. But when it's run through per pupil aid, like I said before, $200 is $200 across the board for every district. So I know you can't read the numbers, but I will point out a couple of benchmarks that are worth noting. So this is 2010-11. This is state aid, so this is money that Wisconsin Heights is getting from the state. So in 2010-11, it was $3,186,000. And if you go to 16-17, when we hit our low-water mark, it was $1,490,000. So in that timeframe, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven years, our district saw 53% decline in state aid. So the operational situation that we find ourselves in locally, having to do things like an operational referendum, unfortunately, are directly tied to that information. A 53% decline in seven years is hard to even fathom. Now, the why, part of it is enrollment in the district had declined for years. Dollars are tied to the number of students that you have, so that was a part of it. But then before, I mentioned the equalization aid formula. That is another part of the why, is because property values in Dane County have continued to grow and grow quite rapidly, where in some parts of the state, they're not growing at all. So that appearance or that per pupil revenue that we have continues to, the gap continues to grow, where it looks like we have a lot of property value compared to other districts with lower property values. Mr. Green, as the astute researcher that he is, wanted me to make sure that I pointed out two things. Number one, this data's from the DPI. And number two, 18-19 is projected. Now, I just saw an email a couple days ago that once again had the projection at 24.5%. But this is our reimbursement that we get for special education, so once again, I'll just point out two things. So in 2010-11, we're just above 28%. It's actually 28.08% to be exact, and if you go over here in 18-19, we're at 24.5%. And this is the reimbursement that we get for special education. So special education funding is a large concern. It's something I'll talk about more later, but if you walk away from this slide remembering anything, it's the fact that our reimbursement continues to go down, but our expenses continue to go up. So it's the double-edged sword. We are investing more, but actually getting reimbursed at a lower rate from the state. I talked about this before, when I mentioned what took place in 2011 with the implementation of Act 10, but just once again, to put a number to it, the revenue limit adjustment that year, school districts lost $528.81 per pupil as a part of the revenue limit adjustment. In the years that followed, there was modest increases of 50, 75, and 75. Those have stopped. I mentioned before that lately, what's being done is it's running through the per pupil categorical aid rather than the equalization aid formula. But once again, just to summarize, and I'd already stated it before, school districts are faced with the challenge of, we still have not gotten back to the pre-Act 10 levels of funding that we had when we lost $528 per pupil. So the tax levy, this is the local levy amount that a school district is able to levy to their taxpayers. So for the most part, with a few exceptions, it would be normal to expect this to kind of be on a gradual path up as we account for additional costs from a year-to-year basis, you know, additional salary, just inflation in general. There are two anomalies, so to speak, and in case people were wondering why, so we're projecting for '21, '22, 2021, 2022, that there would be a slight decrease, and the reason being is, part of the state formula for funding, there's a declining enrollment exemption, which for a number of years, as we were declining enrollment, we were able to utilize that exemption and actually levy money to keep our programs alive as we were declining in enrollment. But based on the fact that our enrollment is now stabilized, that exemption falls off in '21, '22, so we're not able to levy for that declining enrollment exemption that year. But with the exception of that, like I said, generally speaking, following a pretty normal path, and one other exception down here, and this is one of the quirks of the state funding formula with negative aid, districts that are negatively aided can actually get more state aid in the year following when they don't expend their entire budget, which is hard to understand, but true. So we actually would get more state aid by not spending money at the end of the year or on a budget, and we would then get higher state aid the following year. And that's what happened in the case of 16-17 transitioning into 17-18. We'd had monies at the end of the year that were put into fund balance and were not spent, so we actually got additional state aid, and the additional state aid allowed us to levy less for local taxes. This is just the projection, so it's just two pieces on here that pretty much mirrors the one piece that you just saw. So the numbers in red, the bars in red are the local levy, and then in yellow, the top of the lines, that is, we've got three years of historical, so the operational referendum, $1,825,000, $1,883,000. This year, we're actually at $2,227,000 on the operational referendum. And then for the next five years, what we're projecting out and what we're going to ballot for in April is an operational referendum of $2.2 million per year. So this is just combining the operational referendum with our revenue limit. I mentioned enrollment before. So the district actually experienced declining enrollment from 1998-99 through 2013-14. So for a 15-year stretch, Wisconsin Heights was a declining enrollment district. The good news, glass half full, is our enrollment in 13-14 kind of hit rock bottom per se at 712 students, and if you now look at the subsequent years since then, we've crept up. And now in the last couple of years, 16-17, we're at 769, 17-18, 781, 18-19, 776. So our enrollment has stabilized. And just to go back to kind of the why, the relevant, why are we in this situation to a certain extent, the stat that I shared at the beginning that we were a declining enrollment district from 1998-99 through 2013, that is part of the why. And then the other piece connected to that is, so say, on average during those years, we were losing, you know, a dozen kids. Typically, you don't just lose a dozen kids in one grade level. You lose a dozen kids spread amongst eight or nine grade levels. So the notion that every year, we could just cut a staff member, or cut a program, or do something like that, typically with declining enrollment, it doesn't work that way, because you're losing those kids, but they're spread around 12 grade levels. It's not just an acute one-grade level problem. So that contributes to it for sure. But the positive news, like I said, is we've rebounded a little bit. We're projecting slow growth over the next decade, which is encouraging. And two of our three biggest classes that we have in the district are 4K and 5K, so that is encouraging. And then two of the smallest classes that we have in the district are 7th grade and 9th grade, meaning they're in their latter stages of education, and our bigger classes are at the front end of their education. So hopefully, that's a trend that we can maintain. General fund, in school terms, this is Fund 10, which is our general fund. Just in general, on Fund 10, I would say, very similar to what we talked about before with the budget in general, a pretty steady trajectory for the most part, where we just expect to see kind of a slight increase to account for inflationary cost and things like that. like that. Nineteen, twenty, if you notice, so this year that we're presently on, eighteen nineteen, we're operating at eleven million three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And for next year, we're actually projecting eleven million one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The reason being is, in this last year, there have been a couple of major grants that we've received. The school safety grant, we were given over, not given, but we received over a hundred thousand dollars for the school safety grant. There was a Department of Workforce Development grant, fifty to sixty thousand dollars, I believe, involved with that. Peer review mentoring grant that was over ten thousand dollars, a teach grant over ten thousand dollars. So in this last year, with the support of our administrative team, we've received a large influx in dollars for grants. Some of those may be available again next year. If they are, we'll certainly apply again, but at this point, we can't budget, knowing or thinking that we're going to get that large influx of grant dollars. So that is, that's what accounts for the fact that, right now, we're looking at a slight Talked about special education before, and the fact that the reimbursement level is projected at twenty-four point five percent for this year. This is expenses. A few things to note, from fifteen, sixteen, through eighteen, nineteen, so the present year, we've seen a relatively large increase in special education expenditures. Couple reasons for that. Number one, first and foremost, the student need. We've just had some emerging student needs and things that we've had to staff differently, on different programs, we've had to provide for students. And then the other piece that does account for some of that raise, or the perceived raise in cost, is the fact that, when you code employees, you can code them to either Fund Ten, which is the general fund, or Fund Twenty-Seven, the special ed account. I don't know a hundred percent the why, but in the past, there were some employees that were working with special education that were coded to Fund Ten, to the general fund, and it's more appropriate, given their workload and the fact that they're dedicating all of their time and effort to special ed, that they're coded to special ed. So part of that increase, in the last year in particular, wasn't necessarily that we were spending four hundred thousand dollars more, it's that we were more appropriately coding employees that previously were counting as a Fund Ten expense, they're now counting as a Fund Twenty-Seven expense. So I mentioned the two accounts, Fund Ten and Fund Twenty-Seven. Hopefully, the dots are starting to connect a little bit. We talked about the reimbursement level at twenty-four point five percent from the state. So when you look at the amount of money that we've been dedicating, and will continue to dedicate to special education, for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year, we are projecting a transfer amount from Fund Ten, the regular budget, to Fund Twenty-Seven of one million two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. So, those are dollars that, in theory, are Fund Ten, regular education dollars, but because of the funding deficit at the state level, and the reimbursement being at twenty-four percent, we will transfer approximately, or estimating, over one point two million dollars from Fund Ten to Fund Twenty-Seven to cover those costs. So this is one of, we talked about earlier in the presentation, is kind of the why. And the fact that the costs have continued to grow, but the reimbursement has continued to decline. And this is the result of that. So, just kind of in some general terms, without the referendum dollars, obviously, our programs, our services would have to look slightly different. Our technology needs and the maintenance of the school buildings would have to look slightly different. And then really, the bottom line is, the financial stability for the school district, so we can try to offset the funding that we are or are not receiving at the state level. And then, haven't even really talked at all about the federal level, even though the federal amount of money dulls in comparison to the state amount, there is certainly some variance there as well. And I would say, it would be safe to say, a bit of unpredictability right now, as to what that is going to look like at the federal level as well. A few other things, really is just to try to recruit, retain quality staff members in an increasingly competitive job market. One of the other consequences, if you will, of being in a post-Act Ten world, is teacher mobility, administrator mobility has drastically shifted. Because one of the tools, as they were called, that were given to school districts eight years ago, was to make changes to contracts and things like that. And one of the things that many school districts, ours included, changed when we went from a contract to a handbook, are things like post-retirement benefits. So in the past, there was a lot more incentive to stay in a district and to retire in a district, because you knew you were going to get, you know, X number of years of insurance, or five thousand dollars per year for service, or something like that. When Act Ten came along and we lost five hundred and twenty-eight dollars per pupil, but at the same time, we're allowed to negotiate a lot of that unilaterally, school districts stripped a lot of those things out of necessity, to try to balance budgets the best they could at the time. That being said, though, one of the unintended consequences of that is the mobility has increased dramatically, because staff members know, there's less of a carrot at the end of the row, and there's more of a carrot in the short term. And the way that you typically realize that incentive is by moving, and going from district to district, because the demand is there, the pool is much more shallow than it used to be, jobs that used to generate fifty and sixty applications now generate ten. And that's a statewide issue. Second one, provide high-level academic and career plan programs for our students. Certainly want to try to provide an educational experience that is outstanding quality. We're very competitive, and I say competitive in a good way, the schools that surround us have very impressive resumes, and can provide a lot of experiences for kids. So it's imperative that we try to provide the best opportunities for our students as well. And then last, ensure our facilities and operations support best practice in school safety. We were fortunate enough to get many grant dollars this last year for school safety, but that's just an ongoing and evolving situation that we'll constantly have to evaluate and see if what we're doing, what we have, is meeting the needs of our students. So a little historical perspective, as I mentioned before, an operational referendum in the Wisconsin Heights School District is not a new thing. They were actually attempted in two thousand seven and two thousand eight as well, before they were passed, or before it was passed in two thousand nine. Previously, they had gone two-year operational referendums. From two thousand twelve, thirteen, so where we were at six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, if you noticed the progression, from there forward, for the next seven years, we went from six seven five to seven twenty-five, one million one hundred and fifty thousand, one million four hundred and twenty-five thousand, one million eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, one million eight hundred and eighty, and to this year, where we're presently at for the operational referendum, which was approved two years ago, two million two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars and four hundred and thirty-five. So, I say that because, what we have experienced is just kind of the continual escalation of the dollar amount. So, the encouraging news is what we're proposing, or what we're asking for, is that we believe our need at this point has started to shift because of our enrollment dollars, or, excuse me, enrollment numbers being more stable. So rather than seeing that year-by-year escalation, where we're asking for more money each year, we believe that our need can be at that same dollar level for each of the years. If we go back to the earlier slide about the potential Tony Evers effect, the hope would be, is that if the state funding formula does in fact improve over the next few years, that on the last three to four to five years of this, we're able to operate a balanced budget. Because as we went into this, the numbers that we ran were very conservative, in terms of both expenditures and certainly revenues. We were not planning for excess in any way, shape, or form. And what we have planned for, if the state funding formula remains the same, if our enrollment remains the same, if our costs increase kind of at an inflationary rate, with this operational referendum question, yes, by years three, four, and five, we would be operating at a slight deficit. That doesn't mean we're going to come and ask for more money operationally, that just means that we've entered into this with a pretty firm commitment, that we want that number to stay the same for five years. We think that's important for the stability of the community, stability of the school, and we will do what we have to in the next three to five years to do that, without seeing those yearly increases like we've seen for the last seven. Excuse me. So the mill rate, so this is the property tax that we all pay, as people that reside in the school district, and per one thousand dollars of property. So if you look at two thousand fifteen, sixteen, through eighteen, nineteen, those are obviously historical, or what we're presently living. In two thousand fifteen, sixteen, that mill rate was twelve oh six. Fast forward two years, seventeen, eighteen, it was eleven fifty, and this current year, we're at eleven dollars and twenty-two cents. Now, these next five years are what we're projecting. The mill rate will be in the school district, based on the operational referendum. So next year, we're projecting eleven fifteen, the following year, eleven eighteen, eleven oh four, eleven oh three, and ten eighty-nine. So, the summary of that is, given the fact that we're not asking for a larger dollar amount that we're presently receiving from the community, the fact that property values in the district, new homes, things like that, the property value continues to increase, for those of us that are already taxpayers and are already paying tax towards the school district, that rate is projected to actually decrease slightly over the next five years because of all of those factors. Another common question, why five years? So a few things. Number one, the administrative and election-related costs that are associated with this. By the time you factor in legal documents, staff time, and all of those things, ballots, all of the pieces that come with an operational referendum, to do it every two years versus doing it for five years, we're literally talking about thousands of dollars that need to be invested every time we go to a referendum for those pieces. We think that money would be better spent on students and on maintaining our programs. Provides needed time to study facility operations and planning. Well, our buildings are maintained quite well, and our maintenance staff does a great job. This building, the elementary in Mazamanee, a lot of our high school, those buildings are showing their age. Majority constructed, you know, fifty to sixty years ago. They are showing their age. So the possibility that we would be looking to do some sort of work in those areas is certainly there. And if we were going to a referendum, once again, for two years, we just simply would not have the time to analyze those needs, to work with the community on what are we able to do, and to actually then come through and do anything. So that's a part of this as well. Stability, to me, that's a huge factor. That's for our present students, our present staff, our present families, but that also goes for the prospective people that, as they're trying to decide where they're going to locate, where they're going to move their family. Having been one of those people two years ago, the thought of having some stability in your community and knowing that they're on a sound financial footing for the next five years, I think is appealing. And then, once again, if we were looking at tax impacts that, rather than that line slowly declining for the next five years, if we were looking at a large spike, this conversation never would have got off the ground. But when you project the numbers and look at a slow decrease to that mill rate that people are paying, that makes it much more possible, I think, and much more supportable for the community to say, you know what, we understand that the need is there, and that the need has been there for over a decade, and you're showing us, you're projecting that, we actually would see a slight decline. Few other quick things. So part of where we're at right now is, yes, we're stuck at the end of a biennial budget, and we don't know what the next two years is going to look like. We hear speculation, but we don't know. In five years, we would actually be in the middle of a biennial budget. So as we were projecting out, at least for that first year, we would have numbers in front of us, and we would know, here's what the state budget looks like for next year. Right now, we're working off speculation. Two important community events that we've done recently, our future search, had over ninety community members for twelve hours, they talked about a few things. Their most important point that they talked about was trying to be able to recruit and retain staff. They talked about maintaining small class size, and then examining facility operations. School perceptions in the fall, we had a survey with over six hundred and fifty respondents. The community overwhelmingly said they don't want us to cut programs, they don't want us to cut staff, and they don't want us to cut student services. We believe that this option would allow us to take that feedback and act on those things that people took the time to complete. No, light, certainly ending with this, but I do think that the reality needs to be out there, because we can't pretend that nothing is going to change if the referendum doesn't pass, because something would have to change, many things would have to change. So some of the things that would have to change, possibly larger class sizes through the reduction of some staff, less offerings for programs, we would certainly curtail purchases of technology. Maintenance items, which are presently in our capital budget for maintenance projects, would be frozen immediately. Staff reductions, and then the possibility of increasing student fees. But, like I said, I don't want to harp on this, it's certainly not a threat, it's just reality, and it really would have to be. And from that standpoint, these types of options would have to basically be explored immediately, because we're in the process of putting our budget together right now for next school year. So if we found ourselves in that position, we would have to basically immediately start to look at these options and then implement for the nineteen, twenty school year, to try to balance our budget. So that was a lot. Any questions, comments, or things? I know next on the agenda is public participation as well. I don't know if we had anybody sign in there formally or not.
No.
Okay. But I guess just, having heard that, whether you signed in or not, do people have questions?
Just your last slide, this is, that's a downward spiral, I mean, you're not going to track new families in schools, downward spiral.
You know, as I thought about this, because I've thought about this a little bit the last couple of months, a lot. You're exactly right, it's that notion of investing some to try to improve the future, because as I said before, we're not going to find our way out of this situation in the next year or two. But I, I'm confident in the answer, the only way we're ever going to find ourselves fully out of this situation is more FTE, which is more students. And if you're an unattractive district, particularly in the location that we're in, where there's a lot of options really close by that are quite attractive, the thought of people making that the thought of people making that decision, you know, when neighbors are passing large referendums, not just for operations, but hundreds of millions of dollars for facilities. If that's their choice, that's going to be a really tough sell for us. So I appreciate your candor, and I certainly agree with that. The thought of cutting one to two million dollars, that certainly would not put us in that position.
Yes, I would like to see something put in the paper where if you're promoting this referendum to point blank, put that piece on there. Just because even for me, looking at this, it just doesn't stick out.
So on my tomorrow to-do list is a letter to go to both the Star News and the School Journal. I will take that unadvised. It's in draft format, so.
So Jordan, a quick question or just some comments, I guess. I'm a little bit hesitant on the five-year. I find this to be like a Bryce Harper deal. You know, we're projecting out, it's a little bit longer. Because you don't know what's going to happen in two or three years with Governor Evers' budget. And so in reality, we could be in quite a bit of excess. We do have access built in there. So you could have extra, quite a bit of extra. So what is the plan if projections go in that direction? Because I guess I look at it as, there are some costs. When you talk about referendum costs every two years versus five years, I mean, those are minimal compared to, I guess, when I look at it and have the voters come back every two years. I think it's important for them to be able to sit down and see what direction the district is going, to see the things that are going on. So I guess to revisit every two years makes more sense to a person like me than asking for a larger sum in the beginning of eleven million dollars. But the potential is there for excess, so what is that going to use for? What are your projections? Maybe you put it on there and I completely missed it.
Yeah, well, the first thing I'll say is I know I had mentioned the fact that we're projecting a deficit for years three, four, and five. And those deficits are in the two, three to four to five hundred thousand dollars. So if everything worked out when we were, once we're through these two years of divided government and if Democrats took control of the legislative branch and we saw this excess of money that some people are thinking may come. To me, once again, at best-case scenario, that's allowing us to operate with a balanced budget in years three, four, and five. On the front end, we're projecting basically a balanced budget for the first couple of years. Now, I will say, because I've had others ask the question, I mean, if everything was sunshine and roses and we had millions of dollars coming in, well, then, yes. Our conversation internally at some point during this is going to have to be, are we willing to under levy? Because just because two point two million dollars is approved, doesn't mean that's what we have to levy for. So if everything was perfect and we found ourselves in that position, Rich, I hope to God you're right. Because if we found ourselves in that position, that would be the greatest conversation to have is, can we under levy because we've got all of these new state dollars? And then I guess the other thing that I would say to that point. History tells us, this has been going on for twelve years. When this started, we had a Democratic governor. The Democrats were in control of the legislative branch as well. And ten years ago, Wisconsin Heights was in a perilous situation with operational dollars. And to look at that progression of dollars from year to year and to see it incrementally grow for the last seven years to the point where two years ago voters approved more money than what we're asking for for the next five years. No, I can't project things with a crystal ball. But I can look at ten years of history and say, history tells me this has grown for ten years. The fact that we're willing to put our money where our mouth, where the money is and say, we're not asking for this to grow anymore. I guess to me, that's why I think the notion of five years is different than it's been in the past because we're not asking for inflationary increases. And the fact that, like I said, if everything works out great and we get this influx of state money, that's going to balance our budget, not put us at a deficit for three of the five years. And we're prepared to do that if we have to.
I think you bring up a good point with not asking for more. Because if you do research and you have that slide of the past ten years and how it's progressively gone up in referendum need, the fact that you're looking at two point two million for the next five years annually is, I guess, if you're going to bite the bullet, we need more, I guess, in essence, we could be still cutting some programs or doing something, but that's not enough by what you're stating, correct?
Correct.
Because that's essentially what you're looking at. If the government doesn't come through, doesn't provide more dollars, and our increases, and our costs keep increasing, which they have, and you've shown that projection on that slide, potentially, there could be cuts anyways. Because you're showing two point two million this year, two point, what was it, two point three or two, 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 three, seven, five, or something like that? But you showed a steady increase, so potentially, we could have cuts in the near future if the government isn't helping us.
Yeah. And those cuts would be starting with things that are not going to touch students. Maintenance budgets, I talked about that before, Academy Project, whatnot. That's an easy one, that's the first one to go.
And the facility upgrades, is there any talk? Has there been any talk amongst the board members? Are you guys already looking at part of your future search? And I know I was a part of that back a year and a half ago, is the one-site campus. Have you started working on that? I know there was talk then, I know there's been some talk around the communities now. So is this also part of the bigger plan of a facility upgrade?
No. I mean, is there talk? Yeah, there's been talk for five or six years. Is that talk any further than it was then? No. But do we need to have a discussion as a district about the direction of our facilities and what we want to do? Absolutely, but just like we've done with the future search and the school perception survey, that is going to be a community conversation, so we have the feedback of the community before we enter any decision. But to point-blank answer your question, no, that there's no plan there. We need the feedback, we need the information, and to see what's reasonable if any begins to that point.
Well, and the case study that was done earlier this year was compounding on one site, multiple sites, elementary schools. You know, the facilities, it was all encompassing, it wasn't just focused on one area. So I don't know if you had any info on the company that came in and did kind of the research around our facilities, but it was all encompassing, there wasn't a directed path, one way or the other. So yeah, just what Jordan said.
So yeah, the facility study that was done last year just gave options in terms of, from an operational standpoint, based on utilities and things which inherently cost more than our whole buildings. Staffing options, if you went, different options or configurations. And those things were factored into that, and that would be, yes, part of the data that we analyzed and shared with the community. Just, you know, say, here it is, what are your thoughts? To me, yes, that's where we're at, Rich, is sharing that information, getting feedback. Because at the end of the day, if it's not something that the community is going to support, well, then it's a waste of our time, our time, everyone else's time to even engage much further in that conversation. Because without that support, it's never going to happen.
And to be direct, I get all of that, and I appreciated you doing that last year. I guess I was looking more at the, my direct question, I guess, to the viewer of the board was, have there been talks with builders, have there been talks and meetings and, you know, anything going on that, you know, has led people to believe that because it's out there? And I just, I was asking that question. I get the facility study.
So I answered that, right? No? I said point-blank, no.
I think you said no, yeah. So and that's, I get the facilities upgrade thing, or the study still.
Okay. So yes, did that answer on the record? No. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Appreciate the participation. If you want to do it again, come to Mazo next Monday.
All right. Well, Jordan, I just wanted to say thank you for the information and the presentation. I always find it so informational and my head gets overwhelmed with all the information even every time we go through it. Thank you. There was no other people signed in Republican, so we will move on. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes from February twenty-fifth?
Over. Second.
Please, James and Mike. Any questions? Hearing none, Mike?
Yes.
James? Barb? Mary Beth? Isaiah? Gary? And I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll accruals and disbursements as presented?
So moved.
Second, please, Gary and Mary Beth. Any questions? Hearing none, Mike?
Yes.
James? Barb? Mary Beth? Isaiah? Gary? And I'll say yes as well. In presence of time, I don't have a lot to say. If you guys still have questions on referendum, please come next week. I think it's a great opportunity to get together with the community members and really have an ability to add to questions directly. It's such a great time, so. For those that did come here. Hi, Jordan, question of staff?
I've talked for far too long, so let's take the floor and jump in, whoever's that lucky person, it's yours.
I know. So you can see from my brief report, I try to do claims on a regular basis for cash flow purposes and to just keep up with those. And then I'm covering for my assistance position, so trying to do double duty. And one of the big things the last month was the transportation costing in comparison, which we just went over in the committee meeting. Trying to run Baird scenarios for, you know, different things that the budget, the state budget may have, just looking at those scenarios. And then help Jordan review and prepare the presentation for tonight. And just met with a couple different groups throughout the month. Any questions?
Just want to thank, like I think we've already done, for the transportation costing and that, because that's immense. The other thing, I don't know how many of you have ever gone through the Baird model, but it's intense. There's a lot of information that goes into that. I mean, things that you really need to dig and research for to make it meaningful, and so again, I appreciate that work as well. It's awesome.
And thank you for all your work for tonight, too. I know that you guys have spent many hours together, so hopefully you're not getting apart for a reason, right? The barrier between.
Proximity.
Okay. So I updated enrollment. We did get a, you know, second grader last week or two weeks ago, and that bumped us up to one. And then our kiddo who was speech and language only in early childhood actually enrolled in preschool two days a week. So we conquered as well, so that gave us an additional preschool kiddo as well. So we're up to two thirty-six as of this afternoon. So upcoming things to note, we're having a literacy event here next Tuesday from six to seven. Should be a lot of fun. And then near the end of, well, it's the next week as well. So Thursday and Friday, preschool is doing a pet show. Not real pets, except animal pets, so.
It was like, oh, wow. It's crazy. They're so curious.
Yeah, it's going to be fun. And so those are things that are happening just next week here at Flagler. I also, based on some information we got at our last admin meeting, we met, I guess Skype with somebody from Solution Tree. They kind of helped us and guided us a little bit more as far as, as far as implementing PLC was concerned. So we kind of put it out there and kind of asked some questions for staff to see where they're at. And so I did just that, and so I listed those for you there. Those eight questions, just to see kind of the response I got, and I had them rated from one to five, one being not at all, and I think five was completely or absolutely or something like that. So the two things that were the least kind of thought about, they didn't feel as confident, were grade level essential standards are defined. So I had them think about their group and then just be honest about that. And so that was kind of something they wanted more time and work with. And then the second was, it was the last one, overall, I feel positive about where we're at as a grade level in the PLC work. So that was interesting as well. And all of this just kind of gives me information on where we need to go. So obviously, we need to focus efforts more on essentials and supporting some more where they feel like they need it. So we'll go ahead with that. The last thing I had here, as a result of our SIP work with Ed from CSEV two, the preschool group, did it feel like the information they gathered from PALS, which is a phonological assessment that they do three times a year, wasn't giving them enough? And nor did the information really benefit the kindergarten teachers when they looked at it in the fall, it wasn't very helpful to them. So we kind of started looking at other things out there. And so I reached out to some schools in the area to see what their preschools did. And so I had a conversation with a man from Minnesota who, the U of M, they developed something called My A D S, which is a silly name, I don't know what it stands for, but that's what it is. But the key part about it that I enjoyed was that it's not so much rote things like, tell me the names of these letters. It's really getting specific about phonological things, so listening to sounds, can you manipulate them? And it's more auditory and, which is more appropriate than just tell me what these letters are. There is a little bit of that, but it's not what the focus is. And so the conversation will continue with three K, teachers just see where we're going to go. If we want to change anything for next year or not, we'll just kind of keep that going. But we just thought I'd report on that, so there's five things that they measure in this short ten-minute window of time when they have the kids with them. As far as upcoming assessments coming up, tomorrow and Wednesday, we have ACT makeups, which I believe there's like five, two now. For ACT, now we're working, so three, two, okay. So those will happen Tuesday, Wednesday, and we'll send that information back. And then we're coming up to our, the window in the forward, which is again third through eighth grade. So you can see, I just listed out where middle school, high school is going to do theirs and what they're going to do with that. So, and Aspires in there, so I just did, but I forgot, so I apologize. That's for ninth and tenth graders as well. So any questions for me? Thanks.
Hey, my report, I'll start. You noticed I put our current enrollment in there, I was kind of left out. I thought I'd get in on some of that. But one, to highlight some of our staff members, just doing some different things. And I'll start with our reading teachers, reading interventionists, Joseph Geisher, Kelly Conley. Went to State Reading Convention, they came back with a lot of good information. That State Reading Convention is really, it's a big convention, they have it every year, it's down in Milwaukee. We've been inconsistent with sending staff in past years. We want to get back in the team and make sure that we send a team down there. Found it interesting that, you know, just the, I put that in there, the keynote speaker is just focusing on equity within our schools. Matches up to the vulnerable students that we're focusing so much on, but it also, they also talked about equity in technology across the board and just making sure all our students have access, say, access to learning, not only while they're here at school, but also as best we can. They both laid the priority to go to different breakout sessions involving around all of our building of the city halls. They both laid the priority to go to different breakout sessions involving around all of our building of SIP calls, focusing on literacy, and they're bringing that information back to our teachers. So, I appreciate the work that they're doing there. Put a plug in there for our human growth and development, that's coming up recently, coming up next week, actually. Our third graders, really, it's where we start with human growth and development. Our third graders really are focused on hygiene, just daily habits. Share that with you there. And with our fourth and fifth graders, do have separate presentations for the boys and girls. Aubrey Primo, our school counselor, Giddy Howell, our school nurse, they facilitate the girls' presentations. Dave Austin facilitates the boys' presentation. And I know I was sitting there with the kids, so there's two adults with the kids. They do a great job. Our parents are very supportive, do a pretty good job of sending information home, giving access to our parents. I think our human growth development, I'll call it procedures or a packet that we have district-wide. I think we do that every five years, we think we're up next year, so, we think that's part of that period. So, I'll look into that, that's something for, I want to look forward to.
Take out of a hat, or what?
In the future years. But, it's very, truly, the process is wonderful. Parents are involved in the process. Dr. Huff has always been so gracious and been part of the conversation. So, that's something for us, just to keep in mind, something we'll look at next year. Upcoming events, really busy week of, or busy month of April, as you can see. Starting with an exciting way, One School, One Book, you'll hear more about that from me. That's a really popular all-school event that we have with our students, we're going to break that out in April. Scott mentioned the State Forward testing, that's, we'll be doing that in April. Literacy Night, I listed there, April twenty-third. See, that week of April twenty-second is busy, because we rescheduled our elementary music concert. That same week, we pushed that back a little bit, become personal days. Jay and Phil, so you're just leaving a little more time in the spring break in there. So, we moved that back to April twenty-fifth. I think originally it was scheduled for April eleven. So, busy month of April, we'll be back in spring break, we're just moving it back to April twenty-first. Questions for me?
Do you want to talk at all, Mike?
Well, you can't, but yes. Couple of quick things, though. Always give the meeting list. Couple of things we're sharing for sure, though. Our admin team recently completed a book study on the Energy Bus by John Gordon, a very good book. I first read it in two days during Christmas break, so if you're looking for a quick read, I hope you found it as uplifting as I did, Mary Beth. But, I just will say, it's a very positive experience for our team. Couple of things that I really liked that John Gordon wrote out in that book is just the fact that we own our own attitude, and we make a choice, how we're going to look at situations, and that can either be positive or negative. But, at the end of the day, we own that attitude. And then, one of his favorite sayings that he talked about is no energy vampires allowed. And he talked about how in their meeting room, they put up signs that say no energy vampires. So, I adorned our district office conference room with a no-energy-vampire sign, so that when we meet this week, we all enter into that room, understanding that no energy vampires are allowed in that room. And then, Scott mentioned the essential standards of Solution Tree, just really around our development and our goal, so we can support our teachers. So, that was a one-hour webinar, just a very positive experience. What I really liked, both the gentleman that worked with us, is he wasn't afraid to push back a little bit, to challenge our thinking, which is nice to have, that person that's willing to do that. Or, you sometimes get caught up in group think, and you just perceive everything's okay. But, he pressed back a little bit, which was nice. I mentioned the CISA II legislative meeting, very rousing meeting, because it was the day after the budget address. I don't know if I used this quote before, but the quote was dropped that we are in for a fight. And that's relative to the state budget. There's a lot of speculation that we may not have a state budget till October. We're supposed to have it July first. And then, the last thing, our property and liability insurance with John Gibson, and that was a positive meeting. We're looking at more than likely no increase for those rates for next year. So, another celebration, our relative to finance and being fiscally conservative where possible. So, that's it.
Awesome. Can I ask a question? Yeah. I'm wondering how the meeting was gotten, Dan, when, the tech integration?
Yep.
Even summer, is that short?
I can summarize that in a brief statement. So, we went through a draft job description, which talks about what we're really trying to do with that second position, is support teachers and students in classrooms more around the area of tech integration. I shared the fact that that's been feedback that we've been receiving from our teachers, at least for over a year now. It's continually come up again this year. And the fact that we think it's important, and we love to improve the use of technology in the district. So, conversation was fine. We went through a draft job description, and we're working on kind of, how do we scale up with our employees to help them have the skill set to do that? Because we're not looking at adding any staff, it's through the use of existing staff.
All right, committee.
So, we had our transportation meeting about the upcoming transportation contracts, which was great to see some of the bus drivers there. And with that, Jordan said we sent out ten to eleven bids, trying to get bids. We got two back for student and go rightway. Some of the big topics that came up were age of the fleet, wanting to make sure our buses are working in good conditions. We don't have as many breaking down. Another thing we talked about was fuel cost on the contract with whether it's built into the contract, or if it can be adjusted as fuel prices vary throughout the years. Big thing was, we wanted to compare prices from basically making sure we compared apples to apples, so we didn't have, you know, one being a little bit different than the other. The other thing we did kind of discuss was with a new, if we did decide to go with a new company, you're kind of going through that learning curve of, you know, you don't know really what you get until you start working with them. So, I think that's the bulk of it.
Good summary.
All right. So, then, moving on to district business. Do I have a motion to hire Kayla O'Connell as the head volleyball coach for the nineteen season?
So, I'll start.
Discuss any comments? Hearing none, Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. We have a first reading of a policy update. Jordan, I believe, again, did a...
Yep, so, I went with our Niola rep again, very similar to what we had done the last time. We went through all of the potential updates. So, attached, you'll see the summary document of updates. Same thing as last time, really, three reasons for updating policies, either legal, technical, or it's just clarity, so it reads better. This is a first reading, so none of these will be approved formally tonight. But, our plan would be, is at a future meeting, bring these back for a second reading and approval. And then, you can access those in board docs. Any questions at this point? If you have any in the interim, let me know, so I can review it prior to the next meeting.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Are there any other committee or board meeting dates? Again, remember that, aren't, aren't?
March eighteen, yep. So, next Monday, reminder, we're at Mezzo Elementary.
Oh, there it is. It wasn't in the little grid, it was in...
Yeah, I just put it in the notes there. So, a week from now, same deal, Mezzo Elementary School. And the other point I put in there, a question I put in there is, our employee relations, where we do our listening session regarding handbook or things like that, we're to that time of year. So, I'm suggesting potentially April third, so the members of that committee could let me know if that would work. Then, we would schedule that, and let our staff members know that if they wanted to come on that date, we would be there in the staff room to listen to feedback.
So, that is a Wednesday?
That is a Wednesday. We did it at four last year.
Does that open the...
It would.
Oh, it would.
If I do not hear from you with a no, I'm going to assume that's a yes. We're going to schedule it.
Sounds good.
It's only a couple of weeks away. Okay.
Sounds good. All right. Then, do I... Oh, yeah. Well, and that would be, no, employee relations, James is chair, myself, and Gary.
All right, others who come through.
Yes, please. All right, well, then, do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen-point-eight-five, parentheses one, parentheses C, for the consideration of employment compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. When the executive session ends, the school board meeting is adjourned.
Second.
James and Mike? Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Thank you, everybody, for coming, we really appreciate it.